Order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. As a courtesy, make sure that all your cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the wwwminnehahacounty.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on any conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Tuesday, September 4th at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, September 18th at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of meeting date. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the text amendment during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the county commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, September 18th at or after 9:00 a.m. And the same carries forward, the county commission meetings are held in the same room. First on the agenda, is there anyone here from the public who wish to speak on any item that is not listed on the agenda? Okay, next I'll read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved together in one motion by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the July 23rd, 2018 meeting. Item number two, as conditional use permit 18-37. This is to transfer one building eligibility. Petitioner is Paul Carrot. It's approximately four miles east of Baltic. Item number three, conditional use permit 18-38 to allow motor vehicle repair shop and a sales display. It's on the property about a half mile south of Hartford. Petitioner is Dean Stockwell. Item number four is conditional use permit 18-39. This is to allow a 7,600 square foot of total accessory building area. Petitioner is Jason Schoenfeldt. It is approximately two miles east of Crooks. Okay, so we'll move item number four to the regular? Item number five, conditional use permit 18-40 to transfer one building eligibility. Property is approximately one mile southwest of Garrettson. Petitioner is Matthew, sorry, Czech Auction Engineer Swartwout. Any objection to this one? Item number six, conditional use permit 18-20 to allow a telecommunications tower. It's approximately one mile west of Brandon. Exile Towers. Anyone here objection to that? Item number seven, conditional use permit 18-41 to allow a commercial building addition. The owner is H. Paul Sunderman, approximately two miles west of Baltic. Item number eight, conditional use permit 18-42 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area. Petitioners Justin and Robin Icke. They are approximately two miles south of Hartford. Item number nine, conditional use permit 18-44 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area. Petitioner is Devon Elbers, approximately two miles northeast of Brandon. So the only one that needs to be sent to the regular agenda is item number four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the other items. One, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good evening, Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. Conditional use permit 18-39, item number four, is a request to exceed 2,400 square feet of total accessory building area. The petitioner is requesting 7,200 square feet on the PowerPoint there. Isn't that reflected right in the staff report? Excuse me, sorry, 7,600 square feet was the revised addition to that. The staff report change, as written in the staff report is not correct. But what's on the screen is the request of 7,600 feet, square feet. This property itself is located just east of Crooks. It's right along Kiwanis Avenue, it's a gravel road. As you can see, it's about a mile and a half east just off the interstate there, about a mile. The property itself is about 2.81 acres, which falls below the three acre size, which the total size would be 2,400 square feet for what you could have on your property with a building permit for a detached accessory building. The building itself will be a 76 by 100-foot building. As you can see, it'll be located just north of the proposed house along Kiwanis Avenue, just, and here's the driveway right here. This would be the building right here in the house. Just a little bit of background on just some of the other buildings in the area. The property owner at 47230-258th Street has 9,210 square feet, which consists of a couple of buildings used for commercial purposes mainly, and that's on a 1.96 acre lot. And that property is located right here. The property owner at 25747 Kiwanis Avenue has 2,646 square feet, and that property's on 10 acres, which is actually just located just to the north of the subject property right here. And then the last property, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit, is located right here where the cursor is, at 25764 Packard Lane, was a request to allow 9,574 square feet in that property. It's located about a quarter mile to the east, and this is an existing subdivision. On August 8th, staff visited the property and determined that the proposed accessory building size, as you can see here off to the right of this image, that's where the house would be, didn't get a picture of the building itself, but it'd be off to the backside of the image on the north side of the lot, just north of that house. Some of the criteria that we go through, and this is looking north on the gravel road, that's the last picture I have of that. Some of the criteria that we go through in determining conditional use permit criteria is effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity and for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. As I've mentioned, there are a few properties that the Planning Commission has recently approved that are, have more than 2,400 square feet on similar sized properties and some bigger and some smaller. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property should not be negatively affected by the construction of a proposed accessory building for personal storage. Two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. This primary, property in the primary vicinity is around the property, is agricultural farmland with a few acreages, residential acreages that are around the property, within a quarter mile. The requested accessory building would set a precedent for future undeveloped properties in the surrounding area and would further increase the size of personal accessory buildings in the rural area. However, accessory buildings have been approved over 7,000 square feet, of which one was just approved on a different property here tonight, and the other ones are on similar lot arrangements as this one. The future development of agricultural land is entirely dependent on the availability of building eligibilities for residential homes in the area, which there are a few. Three, that the utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The petitioner has not indicated a need for increased utilities. Anything beyond that would have to accommodate things for things like drainage facilities, managed type intensity and flow of water from the proposed building itself. The site plan shows the structure is accessible via the driveway, which is actually just located just south of this picture. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. There's no off-street parking that will be needed with supplemental area on that size of property itself, can be accommodated on the property without any need for additional parking. As this is a personal residential building, there is no commercial use or storage or any business parking on the property that can occur. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. There's no nuisances that are permitted at any time. Any lighting that's used by the building should be directed onto the property, not emitting light onto the gravel road or any surrounding properties that are adjacent to the site. Six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. This building should have no effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The use of the building for personal storage and private use will create few problems to surrounding properties, neighboring properties. This project, or this property is located within what's known as the agricultural production area outside of the growth areas, which sets forth the purpose is to protect, preserve, and promote agricultural uses and the economic viability of farming operations in the area. So recommendation, staff finds that the requested total accessory building area is appropriate for the size of the parcel as well as conforms to the goals and policies of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1839 with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 7,600 square feet. Two, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Three, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time. Four, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent any light spillage beyond the property boundaries. And five, that a building permit is required prior to construction of the accessory building. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for David?
Do you have a couple, one picture of one of the buildings? And this is on one of the adjacent lots to the north of the property.
Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward?
Hi, Jason Schoenfeldt.
You state your address, please.
25759 Kiwanis Avenue.
The petitioner?
And you just plan to store silver wheels?
Yeah. It's pretty much for, I've got a few tractors, combine, a big camper, and I just want to get everything under a roof. That's pretty much it.
Any other questions for him?
If you're storing like a combine there, do you potentially see this as a farm site with storing lots of agriculture equipment there?
I've just got two tractors, a combine, and a camper that I just, that's all I see in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we may call you back, okay? Any other proponents? Opponent, you want to come forward? State your name and address, please.
I'm Steve Johnson, 25752 Kiwanis Avenue. I'm sort of disappointed in the presentation of staff. I mean, if you guys have been requiring people to not have these glaring lights, then all the guys that you've been giving licenses to over here by the interstate exit are violating their late terms because they're all getting over to my house. Now, this guy here could put everything he's got out there and about a third of the building he's asking for, and he could put it a lot of places other than right up there beside the road where it's going to be right by everybody. I assume that you guys pay for a camera. This is all we could get for a picture of this lot, the one going away? I guess I didn't realize that I was going to have to come down here and have brought all this stuff. I think that this is way too much building. I mean, I thought I had a big garage, 1,100 square feet, and yeah, the guy next to it, I'm not sure how big his is, but I know he stores stuff in there for people, and I'm sure this guy will be storing for money or running a construction company out of there or something like that because there's, I just don't believe that anybody's going to put this building up for a couple of antique tractors, a boat, and a camper. I just, you know, this is too much building. You should, oh, and this is not, you may say it, think it's agricultural, but this is in the Sioux Falls School District in the same section as a Sioux Falls grade school. So this is, yeah, it's sort of on the edge of the city stuff, but this is really where eventually there's going to be some more people. I was a township supervisor out there 20-some years ago, and we have mostly eaten up all the eligibilities right around where we're at, but there's still stuff growing out there. And most of those houses, yeah, you've given a couple of those big buildings, but most of the people out there have about a two- or three-car garage, maybe they got two-to-five- or six-car accessory garage, but very few of them are putting up these six, 10,000. And that one that you gave that was just a half mile to the east, that's on about a five, six acre lot, on a really big lot actually, that was the original homestead of this quarter section that's right across the road of what you're talking about. But this is too big of a building, and I didn't even realize that. I thought they were, maybe have it down below. I think it's going to be used for storage. There'll be stuff coming in and out, they'll be running a construction company out of there or something like that because I worked on, I worked in farm-related stuff when the grounds where they do the Jazz Fest were farm fields. I was down there with a hoe, hoeing them. And so, you know, farming doesn't stay forever. And by having a great big building like this out here, especially right up on the road. If he puts it down, way down on the back, then maybe, but that's a, that's level of the road, then his property drops way off. So now we're going to have it right up here next to the road. Bad idea.
Mr. Johnson?
Go ahead, Becky.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
That's okay.
I'm wondering, so what would make this, you know, your objection is to the size and to the location?
The size, and I'm sure the ugliness. I mean, I went out of the, my house is 100 years old. I went out of the way to build an accessory building that looks just like it. Nine, 12 pitch, returns, two-inch reveal siding. Most of this stuff that goes up out there is, you know, I mean, it's like industrial vomit. Excuse me.
So did you show us on the map where you live?
I moved, I moved across the street from where this is. Oh, okay. This is my house right there, and I own this property right there.
Okay.
And I've been out there for 40 years.
And what would make this acceptable to you?
For building and not up there on the, not up, not up there next to the road. That's, if it's up there next to the road, that's for the convenience of the people you're going to tell to come out there and park at my place for so much a month. Or put a limitation, you can't have but two overhead doors on the thing, you know? Can't have more than, can't have any extra meters, you know? I mean, there's a, but especially, I mean, are you guys doing this light deal that he was reading on his thing? It has to be light that doesn't glare off the stuff because that storage place you let in about two years ago over on the interstate exit, their lights, I can just about read by them from a half mile away. Now, I don't think that you're going around, that you're sending your people around to make sure they're even following the rules they're supposed to be. I don't usually come down, I haven't been to one of these meetings for 25 years, but, you know, just counting on, counting on people to do this stuff. Thank you. Or if you have any questions more? I mean, I, I just, I don't see where, I mean, so far all I've seen is, I was going to clean, I have a tractor I drive down my ditch here. Well, he's had, been doing, they've been doing some cleaning up over at their place. I see there was a nice little bundle of branches laid in my ditch.
Any other comments?
I have a question from the petition.
Petitioner, will you, Jason, will you please come back to the podium, please?
Thank you. Is there a possibility that the building could be placed further back in the lot or a little bit different location?
Yeah, I can push it downhill.
Would that be a problem with the slope of the land?
Nope.
Wouldn't be, if we move it back, would work okay for you?
Can you bring up that other? I don't just own this, I own this. So I can put that building way back here, and you probably wouldn't even see it on the road. The plan is to plant trees here and here, so you're hardly even going to see our house. Like I said before, this is ag land. It's for my agricultural equipment. I'm not going to rent this out to anybody. But I'm not opposed to moving it off the road.
Any other questions for him?
Yeah, so Jason, he was concerned, how many, like, how many overhead doors might you have on the building?
I guess I haven't even thought about it.
Okay, so that's not an issue right now?
Yeah, I haven't even got that far, I guess.
And lighting, I mean, I think.
Well, I'm certainly not going to have lights like the storage units. That's a guarantee.
Right, I'm sure Mr. Johnson's kind of grieving from other instances rather than just this.
That kind of kills, I guess, that kills my view at night, too. So, I mean, it's, I'll bet there's a lot of people around there that have a problem with it.
I think you're fully aware of all the conditions.
Yes.
Along with the fact that building permit has to be placed before all this happens anyway.
Yep.
You know, I think if you can move the building in all consciousness, good neighbors and whatever, that works. And the fact that you're going to plant trees will be very helpful, I think, too.
I think it's going to be helpful to just keep the dust and everything down, too, out of our, you know, that's another thing.
Who knows, if you move it a little bit, maybe you'll want to park your combine in from the field. Not even bother to bring it around on the road.
That's the plan.
Any other questions for Jason?
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Commissioners? Any comments?
Point of clarification, if we do approve this, does it need to be a stipulation or is it, that we can put in that ten northwest corner of that parcel?
We could add that.
Do you want to add that condition?
I think so. I mean, if you agree, we'll do it, and, you know, I think it helps, like you said, being a good neighbor. I think that if there's any point of contention to it, why not have that in there?
Just add another item, probably number six?
You just need to add another condition that it be placed closer to the, I don't know how you call it. I mean, we want it to be able to be clear, so it's not vague. So, how far to the west do you want it to move?
That's a good question. I guess, with simplicity, you just say the northwest quarter, and you can put it with anywhere within that northwest quarter of that property? Just clear it up? So you say, I would make a motion to approve with a added number six. That building would be, need to be located in the northwest quarter of that parcel.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
All those in favor of that motion, including item number six, which will be added as a conditional, another condition? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move on to item number 10.
All right. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item number 10 is a zoning text amendment. Approximately a year ago, the Planning Commission approved a zoning text amendment for, to amend the CAFO regulations. The ordinance became effective in September of 2017, and since that time, the Planning Commission has heard several CAFOs that have gone in front of the Planning Commission and been approved. Through those, that process, there's been some review and suggestions that have been happening for how we can improve what was amended in 2017. So staff reviewed this with Planning Commission last month, and it's some ideas of how the CAFO ordinance could be changed or amended. Staff looked at three areas of the CAFO ordinance, and this would be the first area, section, Article 1210, conditional use permit regulations. Section deals with construction documents, since many of these large CAFOs have very large buildings associated with them. Originally, the ordinance required a 50-foot wide or wider building to get engineering. At this, roughly the same time this ordinance became effective, staff was just beginning to require engineering for all buildings 60 feet wide or wider, and that was based on the building inspectors' understanding of the Building Component and Safety Information Guide, which was produced by Structural Building Components Association for that 60-foot building. The proposed change is then to have an engineering requirement for buildings over 60 feet instead of 50 feet wide to make it so it, it's comparable for both buildings that are put up non-CAFO related and for CAFO-related buildings. So, is there any questions about that particular item?
I just wanted some clarification on what we really mean by professional engineer. I mean, I'm just thinking about terminology, and we ran into some challenges with that term of professional architect, so I think I'm just wanting to make sure that we have the right terminology so that this works.
I guess, professional engineer being one that has a stamp, I don't know, maybe Mike?
I think that's a great point. I mean, having an engineer's stamp is essentially what we look for in the construction industry, technically, so I think just that engineered stamp is, I would say is a good delineation.
So the professional engineer is the correct terminology?
Yeah, or stamped document. I think a professional engineer is fine. I don't think there's any. I don't think there's any ambiguity in my mind, but.
It's not just my usual language, so I needed to clarify. Thank you.
All right. All right, so the second, uh, part of the ordinance, I'm sorry, this got really small. If you look in your packet, maybe it'll be a little easier to read. Uh, pertains to Article twelve-ten, uh, separation requirement for criteria for CAFOs. As part of the ordinance amendment, uh, the separation requirements were changed a year ago, and, uh, there is still an allowance to reduce the separation, uh, if there is trees to be planted or landscaping requirement is met. Uh, staff worked or received, uh, several recommendations that the professional landscape architects that were used during the, uh, previous applications, uh, were not well-versed in agricultural, uh, applications of their, of, of plants, um, and how to, to apply that to this sort of setting. Uh, where the, uh, Minnehaw County Conservation District, uh, has better expertise and more experience with working with, uh, agriculture and various different types from, for reducing wind, for reducing smells, for reducing, uh, snow accumulations, all sorts of different tree belts for different applications. Staff worked with the, uh, Conservation District, uh, to come up with some extra wording, and they were very good about adding some suggested wording on how we can improve this section of the ordinance, including, um, uh, that existing trees can be used towards meeting the requirement of the, of, uh, the five rows for the separation of smell reduction, uh, that there is, uh, not only that the trees be designed for odor reduction, but also for visual berry, barrier, um, as part of that process between the CAFO and the adjacent property. Then, the last area there in number four, uh, that for, previously, if trees died, we just said we had to replace them, and the Conservation District suggested that we specifically add in that the replacement for three consecutive years, and that the, after that, the shelter belt must maintain ninety percent survivability. So that way, if in ten years, a, a windstorm blows down half the trees, they'll have to replace up to at least that ninety percent or more, um, in that timeframe. I guess, and then the, the final part is that, uh, the Conservation District is listed as an approved, uh, organization to, uh, be used as the professional to, uh, design the tree, shelter belt for the odor reduction. So, is there any questions about that? All right, I'll move on. And then the, uh, final part of the ordinance that, uh, we were looking at changing would be the text amendment, oh, excuse me, Article nineteen-oh-five for Planning Commission Hearing Notification. Through the, uh, conditional use permit process, we've had some concerns about, uh, the requirements, notification requirements. Uh, for, even in the previous ordinance, the CAFOs were required to have a different notification requirement than the rest of a, a regular conditional use permit. This maintained that more stringent further, uh, setback for, uh, a half-mile setback for notification, and then it required certified mail to go out. The previous ordinance, uh, required the certified mail include a return receipt, uh, which is a little green card that's attached to the, the letter, that is signed and then returned to the sender to show who signed it and when. Uh, it has been, uh, raised to staff that this is a concern because, uh, for a few different reasons. One is that it's confusing. It's not a typical, uh, type of mail that is used by individuals to ha, send a re, certified mail with return receipt. And so, not everybody understands what's the difference between them. Uh, another concern is that the, these lists of ones you go a half-mile out can get really long, and what, to have certified mail and a return receipt ends up being approximately seven dollars per letter to send out, and it gets to be an expensive, uh, mailer when you add up that. It's about twice the cost of just certified mail. Then the third, uh, point that was brought up is that certified mail does require a signature by someone to receive the mail. Uh, the only difference is, is that the signature is unknown. Oh, it's only provided to the, um, to the post office and not to, back to the sender. So, a, anybody who received that would sign for it, and we said, yes, somebody got that piece of mail, um, or they have to go to the post office to sign for it to get that piece of mail. So, um, that's what the, uh, why we have suggested to remove the return receipt out of the ordinance, but everything else remains the same. So any questions about that? All right, with that, um, uh, provide, given all these different, um, uh, changes, these three different changes, uh, staff finds the text amendments changes are consistent with the A-one Agricultural Zoning District and Envision twenty thirty-five Comprehensive Plan, and staff recommends approval of zoning text amendment number eighteen-oh-two.
Kevin, I got one question way back in our staff analysis, and this is, this is really a gray area. What's your definition of a large-scale farm? Because to a farmer who's doing something, he may say that it's not large. To a neighbor down the road, it's huge. So, how can we clarify small to large?
So, uh, you're referring to, um?
Staff, it's under the staff analysis, it's just large-scale farms and related agricultural uses.
Sure, in the agricultural, agricultural production area. Uh, so that's part of the, the, uh, Envision twenty thirty-five Comprehensive Plan. I guess, I think that the comp plan actually has a definition, I can't think of it right now. So I, as you see, there's quotes around this.
Yep.
Large, larger-scale farms and related agricultural uses, including feedlots and livestock raising. Uh, I guess in the comp plan, it's not built to be, uh, real specific. It's not, it doesn't have to be specific like the, uh, ordinance, um, where if, if we were defining it for the ordinance, we would want something very specific and, and where it's going to be, and, uh, but for a comp plan, we wanted to have more of a broad idea that in this agricultural area, uh, it's going to be a range of farm and sizes, uh, in this area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, this is a public hearing, but we also need a motion to approve this.
I'm going to approve the, um, item number ten, the zoning text amendment.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Is it old business?
Uh, we can just report, let's see, we had the appeal, Bonnie, you were there. Uh, it was a little bit of a rig, it was a little bit of a craziness because the guy showed up thirty minutes after the, after the, you remember that? Or did you leave? Oh, you left. Well, he showed up thirty minutes after, uh, the commission had taken action, and so we all sort of reheard it, and, uh, nothing really changed. So anyway, we had the, what was the appeal of?
That was for that shed over there by Hartford. Is that what you were talking about or not?
What was the appeal?
Marissa's shed over there?
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, that was, the, the county commission upheld your, uh, original recommendation. And then the other item, I guess, under older new business would be the, um, the event that we're having, and David sent out the, um, email on September, the date, uh, September seven, seven. So just to remind you of that, and that's all I have.
Okay, no new business either? Okay. Need a motion adjourned?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. Hard work on all of this, you guys.
Yeah.
There was a lot of stuff to make, and all went really smoothly.
Yep. Fifty-two minutes.